Onto public communication, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Written requests, members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will normally be allotted five minutes. I don't believe any of them were 24 hours in advance.
None received.
Thank you. And so now we're moving on to five, appearance of interested citizens. I'm gonna call up, I have several on gap. I don't know that you all had time to designate a speaker. Probably not. So we will honor those. And we'll call up Phil. Come on up to the podium there, Phil, and just please state your name and your address. And we'd be happy to hear what you have to say.
Thank you. My name is Philip Benstock. My address is 1040 Lincoln Road, number 114, Yuba City, 95991. One of my concerns is there are many PG&E cables that are going through the foliage of trees. We're now heading into drier weather and I am concerned because three times I reported a particular incident to PG&E. PG&E said these were all ATT cables, yet some of the cabling goes to a light post. I don't believe that electrical cables going to light posts are AT&T. And I'd like to find out what we can do to alleviate this hazard. And I'd be happy to work with anybody on this. The other issue I'd like to bring up is that according to the Yuba City PD, Police Department, there's an ordinance that says that any patriotic religious or sport event at the Sutter County Fairgrounds is not limited to volume or time regarding noise. I would ask that this be revisited as the volume and hours of noise often exceed commonly accepted volume and time. For example, on Cinco de Mayo, which was the day before workday, the noise went on until 10:30 on, well, Sunday night. So I would ask, you know, if we could revisit that. And again, I'd be happy to work with anybody on this if you'd like.
All right.
Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Phil. I'm gonna set this aside and we'll just follow up later. Okay. All right. I try to put these in alphabetical order real quick. I suppose it doesn't really matter. So we'll hear first from Mr. Eric Burns. There he is. Followed by, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Jeremy Gilroy. If Jeremy, if you could get up and queue up behind Eric and then Sharon right behind Jeremy. Sir.
Eric Burns, do you need my address?
You're good.
Okay. My name's Eric Burns. I am a, I'm speaking on behalf of FRAC or in regards to FRAC. My daughter is a participant on that team. And the ability or the possibility that this program will not continue year round is, or even catastrophically disbanding the program would be disappointed, disappointing to say the least. And I suggest that she'll probably get several sentiments in that area. But what I also wanted to bring up was that I've been a Yuba College employee for over 20 years. Many of you might remember that Yuba College used to have an amazing pool. A pool that was Olympic sized, a separate diving center. And for budgetary reasons, it was shut down temporarily. It is a pool that ended up not recovering from that temporary budgetary shutdown. I am concerned that this is on, this particular facility is on that same sort of track. There's not a whole lot of, there's some parallels, but not a ton of parallels, but it's still concerning. The pool was initially brought offline. There were still costs associated with it while it was offline and unusable. There were concerns with, we had issues with vandalism. We had issues with mosquitoes because the chemicals weren't not maintained. Ultimately, that pool was purchased by the taxpayers, added to the program in the 70s. They only got about 10 years of service of the pool and then had the budgetary constraints that brought that pool down. It did not recover. Fast forward, I don't know, 30 years now, if you guys remember. That pool is now broken and underground. It took the taxpayers' money, Measure J. Some of those funds were used to disassemble it because it continued to be a cost during in operation and a concern and a liability. So on behalf of FRAC and I think the community, you know, pools, they cost money. The city is married to having a community pool. And that pool cannot service the community if it's offline or closed. The pool, at best, you can have programs and user groups that can mitigate the costs. But again, it can't do that if it's offline. So I think, you know, reconsideration of shutting down the pool, bringing it offline on behalf of the community, in particular, the program that I'm involved with, with FRAC, is something for the council to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Jeremy, I presume?
Yes, I'm Jeremy. 767 Village Court. First off, I appreciate your comments, Mayor Harris, by telling us your viewpoint straight off. And I learned a little bit about what's going on just from what you said. So I really appreciate that. And I appreciate you taking ownership and I appreciate you putting it on the agenda. So thank you for that. I'm here today because I had, I have three kids that have participated in gap and FRAC. And they're, they coincide, they're both together. And the question that you've struggled with is what to cut? And how much does a pool cost us to run? Well, I'm here to kind of reverse things around a little bit. How much is it gonna cost you not to run that pool? And what I'm talking about is not money. I'm talking about the investment in the youth in Yuba City and all the good that comes out of FRAC and gap. My three kids have greatly benefited from it. And as a result, my kids have given back to the community. And taking that away is a big deal. So you might think, oh, you know, you got seven months out of the year, six months out of the year. Swimming's a full-time thing. And you have to keep at it every day if you're gonna be able to compete in the sport. So the measurements not involved with money, kids having something to do versus not having something to do and getting in trouble. I know of FRAC kids that have gone on to swim at college level, Division One with scholarships. If you have a six-month program, you're not gonna develop those type of kids that could go on to a higher level. And I'd also like to point out that other communities like Chico, Roseville, Woodland, Folsom and Davis all run all-year-round programs. And they see the investment in their youth. And that's why they're doing it. And I'm sure that their pools aren't producing a lot of profit either. In the end here, I'd just like to say that I believe that whatever the cost is that is costing the city is well worth it to keep our youth engaged in something really positive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Sharon.
Hi. First, I'd like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I know that we are all granted that right, but I still appreciate you being here and listening to what we have to say. Again, my name is Sharon Gilory. My address is 767 Village Court in Yuba City. I run Feather River Aquatic Club, which is more popularly known as FRAC, Go FRAC. And I also coach River Valley High School Swim Team, Marysville High School Team. And I also run a year-round water aerobics program at Gauchea Aquatic Park for senior citizens year-round. In regards to the closure, I have so many things that I want to say, but I only get three minutes, so I will save more for later. But I really feel that this entire situation has been handled wrong. I've been shocked, angry, insulted, devastated because I'm one of those strong advocates that truly believe our kids matter, our seniors matter, our high school swim teams matter, our master and lap swimmers matter, our employees matter. And I feel like a lot of those people have been let down by not hearing their voices heard. Gauchea Aquatic Park was opened back in 2007. I was there. When you walk inside the lobby, the first thing you see is this plaque embedded in the wall. And the plaque reads, "Gauchea Aquatic Park, dedicated to the citizens of Yuba City, to enhance their quality of life." If that park was in fact dedicated to us, the citizens, why were we not allowed to have a voice when it was decided to be shut down? This is a $16.4 million facility and not yet one representative from any of the people that utilize it and are involved paying into it year-round. Not one of those people were contacted prior to the start of this discussion, and that is absolutely not acceptable to me. Has anyone researched what happens to a pool if it goes black? I have. How much does it cost to get it back to proper working condition? What happens to our beautiful building when vandalism and graffiti take it over? Is the city actually going to save any money if those repairs have to be made? And if what the newspaper said the other day, yesterday, was accurate and the facility won't even be paid for until 2036, does it really make sense to just let it sit and deteriorate? I don't think so. What does the closure mean for FRAC? Well, it means we're gonna have to close our doors. We cannot run a year-round program operating seven months out of 12. The closure also presents a huge problem for our high school swimmers. Both River Valley and Yuba City have seasons beginning the first week in February.
Sharon, I hate to interrupt, but we have a lot of people online and I guarantee your message has been received from the dais.
All right. Then I will end with our programs, including senior water aerobics, give life to gap. And I think people should know FRAC has been around since 1968 and have had a lot of impact on thousands of youth, which you'll be hearing more about today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Rocko Greco, 1532 Mayhar Court, Yuba City, California, 95993. And I know you have a lot of people to hear, so I'm gonna be pretty brief tonight. Partially because I know most of you well enough to know that you're advocates for kids and for this community. And I'm hoping from what you see here tonight, you understand how important it is to us. And if we need to come back with hundreds more people to make that clear, then that's obviously something we can do. I just wanted to relate a couple of quick things. And one of them was a little bit of the irony of earlier tonight as we're giving an honor to parks and wrecks. And one of the things that was said was it adds value to homes, community, improves health and the youth of the community. And so I've spent the last 20 years of my life dedicated to the youth of this community. So this means a lot to me. When I look at it, not just for the kids and what I see it's done for them and for the kids that aren't here even year-round, that come and go and through lessons and everything else, it adds something to a community. When we have our annual swim meet, I hear people from other communities talking about, wow, they have such a nice facility up here. It's amazing. Like, we wouldn't have expected this in a town this small. And those are the types of things that as we try to grow a community are what are gonna bring in people. Those are the types of assets that we have that bring people to a community and improve the tax base. So I've heard something about the money, the dollars that it costs or that we might be negative, but there's been no opportunity to solve that or look at it. And I think given that opportunity, that we can definitely come up with something. Because even just looking around, driving around the city, driving in today, I mean, I'm sure the cost of just this grass outside and the sidewalk work here was probably in excess of what we're talking here to keep FRAC open year-round. So even giving it just the year to look at it and be able to figure out other options or have a conversation with the stakeholders in the community to be able to say, hey, here's another way that we can make it so that it's viable to keep open, I think is all that anyone's asking here. So for the youth, for the kids, for the whole entire city, I just, it's something that I'm proud of. When people come to visit, we always take them there during the summer. So I hope that you guys will reconsider when we have a chance to come back again. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocko. Kayla.
Kayla.
I'm sorry?
Kayla.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kayla.
That is an I, not an L, sorry. And Ryan Dollywall, if you can queue up behind, there you go.
Hello, my name is Kaia and I am a swimmer for the team of FRAC. I live in Yuba City. And I just wanted to say that FRAC is a very important part of my life and having the swim team has made me happier as a person. And I always come back from practice thinking, man, I feel great today. And not having that would be unfortunate. And having this whole community where I feel like I am truly friends with everyone on the team is something that is a very important thing to me. And I just wanted to say I am appreciative that everyone came here today to support it. And I just wanted to say thank you for listening.
So Ryan Dollywall and then followed by Taylor Houck. If he or she could line up behind Ryan, that'd be great.
Good evening, I'm Ryan. Address is 771 Village Court. I am 18 years old and I've been employed with the city of Yuba City for almost three years now. I started at gap as a lifeguard and worked my way up to a management position. Tonight, I am here speaking on behalf of many employees at Gauchea Aquatic Park in regards to this recent decision to close the facility. These employees sacrificed numerous hours of their summer at the facility, working almost consistent 12-hour shifts with a 30-minute lunch period that we are not paid for. While receiving no overtime hours due to being considered part-time, most employees still work over 40 hours, sometimes over 50. Our paychecks max out at 80 and they're rolled over for any hours we work over. However, we continue to suffice the number of staff needed in order for activities to operate and open for the community. These same employees were made aware of this drastic decision through word of mouth by peers and worst of all, the local newspaper, not an administrative staff member. Is that considered loyalty? This is my second year as a manager at gap and I'm yet to be made aware about this decision. Many lifeguards work and rely on the income from the months the city plans to shut down the facility. And for many of them, finding a new job with such short notice that accommodates their busy academic and athletic schedules will be challenging. Eventually, they will find a new stable job and move on, but they have felt their trust and loyalty has been breached and will not return to this unstable environment. This Sunday, July 21st, a private event is taking place at Gauchea Aquatic Park. Many staff members have discussed not showing up to work this event due to the lack of empathy and respect shown towards them. Although the private party is not to blame for the feelings of the staff, you are. But it seems nothing but statistical information matters. The lap and master swimmers, the water aerobic participants, and last but most definitely not least, the Feather River Aquatic Club will be the ones bearing the weight of this closure. These are the members of our community that the employees have engaged and built relationships with. FRAC has hosted many children of our community for longer than this facility has been in operation. These children have not only been coached in swimming, but in discipline, kindness and human respect. They have a place in FRAC to grow and feel pride in their accomplishments and their team. They are a family, let no soul tell you otherwise. This closure will cost them their team as we know it. The proposed fix of this problem is insufficient to say the least. These kids will lose a place they call their own and a family that has grown to be their own.
Taylor, Taylor, and then on deck would be Lea Lorton.
I'm Taylor Houck. I'm 13 years old and I've been swimming with FRAC since I was seven and I've made many friends during these six years. This is the only sport I participate in and I swim five days a week at the gap pool. I qualified for Junior Olympics many times in both long and short courses and represented our county at those meets. My coaches and the opportunity to practice daily have taught me everything I need to know in order to become good enough to qualify for these meets. I know swim isn't talked about as much as other sports like baseball and soccer, but these meets are really important and the only reason I get to participate in them is because I'm a member of the FRAC swim team. My plan is to attend a university and I was hoping for a swim scholarship. I don't know what I'll do if I no longer have swimming. I love swimming and if I can't swim in the Yuba City, if I can't swim in Yuba City, then I'll have to find a new city that offers me the opportunity to continue the sport that I love.
On deck is Catherine Maloney.
Good evening. My name is Lea Lorton. Hearing about the closure of the Gauchea Aquatic Park for five months out of the year is disappointing and quite frankly, it's horrifying. I was born and raised here in Yuba City. I grew up playing sports here all the way through Yuba College. I was one of the lucky kids that succeeded and enjoyed the more popular sports. My childhood sport and love was never threatened to be taken away by the city. My son has tried soccer, baseball, basketball, gymnastics and even karate. He has played most of these for at least three seasons each due to me telling him, give it one more shot, bud. Try it one more season, you may end up liking it. Not all kids fit this mold and like the more popular sports. It wasn't until last year when my mom asked me if there was a local swim team. We did some research and found a program that would change my son's life. That program is FRAC, Feather River Aquatics Club. He tried out for the team and made it in August last year. His first practice, I sat there and watched him with his new team swimming lap after lap after lap after lap. He swam 44 laps that evening. I was so worried he was gonna come out of that pool exhausted and tell me he never wanted to go back. He came out exhausted. He dried off, put his dry clothes back on, we walked out to the car and as soon as the car door shut, he looked at me and said, Mom, I loved it. Everyone here is so encouraging. I loved it. I wanna be on swim team the rest of my life. As a mom who has watched your child struggle in all other sports and feel defeated, seeing your child light up and fall in love with something is precious. FRAC has built confidence in my son. It has lit a fire inside my son to love being healthy and to work hard for what he wants. The FRAC coaches, they are hands down amazing. I'm a firm believer in kids needing to live a healthy lifestyle. My parents, my parents told me as a kid, as long as I did well in school and had some kind of extracurricular activity year-round, they would take care of the rest. They allowed me to stay a kid and to enjoy being a kid. I've told my children that same thing. My daughter found dance at the age of three. She still loves it six years later. She found her year-round passion. My son has finally found his year-round passion just in time for the city to yank it away from him. And for what? The Appeal Democrat just ran an article and the city's general fund is sitting pretty and better than ever before on July 10th. Four days later, they say that they have to close the pool five months out of the year for the city's budget with no notice? This decision affects the entire FRAC program. How is FRAC supposed to hold their annual swim meet the first week of February? How will the pool ever be ready to host after sitting black for five months? How will the kids be ready to swim and be in swim meet shape? FRAC provides a wonderful year-round activity with so many health benefits. Instead of closing the pool for five months, why can't there be discussions on how to offset the costs during the fall and winter months? I've heard in 2016, solar panels were installed to help defray the cost in energy, to help it heat during the colder months of the year. Are there not enough solar panels? There are no more school, there are no more pools in the area left for recreational. San Brandon Pool, that was closed. The beautiful pool at Yuba College has been empty since I went to school there in the 90s. Why won't the city look at ways to save our youth year-round swim program? There are kids on the team that have Olympic dreams and work hard on their goals. Where can they train now? The decision to close the pool for five months out of the year is a horrible decision. The city council is killing the dreams of many of this community. Please, as a lifelong citizen of this area, fight for our kids, fight for their health and fight to keep the pool open.
My name is Catherine Maloney. I'm 14 years old and will be a freshman this year at Sutter High. At age 11, I joined the Feather River Aquatic Club and immediately loved swimming on the team. I made so many amazing friends and can always look forward to swim practice. When I was 13, I began to get chronic migraines. Chronic migraines, unlike normal migraines, is when a person gets migraines 15 or more days out of the month. Triggers for these migraines can be almost anything, from a car ride to the slightest knot of a head. Because they can be triggered so easily, a person suffering from them must be very careful in what activities they participate in. But since exercise is almost essential in the prevention of migraines, this presents a problem. As a full-body workout that still remains low-impact, swimming is one of the only options for a person with migraines. Other medical conditions that require low-impact cardio workouts are joint pain, low-back pain and many kinds of heart disease. Aside from the many health benefits of swimming, if the pool is closed for five months out of the year, all of our high school teams will also begin to suffer. Many swimmers who compete for their high schools also swim year-round on FRAC. If they no longer have that opportunity, they will either become out of shape or will begin to compete in another sport and may not ever come back to swimming for either FRAC or their high schools. This could severely hurt the high school swim teams of Yuba City. For me personally, I would be devastated if my chosen sport was no longer available to me. FRAC has taught me what it means to be part of a team and to persevere even when you're, what you're doing is hard. If swim team was no longer an option for me, I don't quite know what I would do. I would no longer have an option as far as athletic teams go. For me and my four siblings, all of which have been part of FRAC at one point or another, I would like to say that I am extremely disappointed with the city's decision to close down such an amazing and beneficial program that is a big part of so many people's lives. I deeply and sincerely hope that you may be swayed into changing your decision by all the people here today that rely on you to protect and preserve this wonderful opportunity for those living in Yuba City. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And behind Mr. McGrath, we have Allison Newton, please.
There we go. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you. I am not a member of FRAC. My name is Patrick McGrath. I live on Lobata Road, which is up in Browns Valley. I think I have a unique perspective on this that probably is not shared by anybody else in this room. Number one, I'm a year-round user of the facility, have been for seven years. It's fantastic, let me tell you. Secondly, I've been in your shoes. Obviously, I was the district attorney in Yuba County and I've gone through 20 budgets during my five terms and I understand that difficult decisions have to be made. Certainly, I think you've understood now that sometimes decisions that were made when you pencil them out and you don't think perhaps they have, there's collateral consequences sometimes, right? So I think you're seeing that here today. But more importantly, before my legal career, I actually was an aquatic director for the YMCA. I was responsible for a facility. I wish it was as good as the gap, but I was responsible for a facility. It was not a year-round facility. And I can tell you that the difficulties we had in opening a pool at the end of the winter and then closing it basically amounted to a situation that I hope you don't go into. It is penny-wise, pound-foolish. So Sean, I am extremely pleased that you took the bull by the horn this evening. My suggestion was going to be to you to set a special council meeting where you could actually explain the budgetary process to folks because I tell you, they have no idea how budgets are formed, the decisions that you have to make. And during that time, I would suggest that you break out what the figures were that you're looking at, what the revenue numbers have been. I think the recognition is that this pool will never be revenue neutral if you're gonna run it for 12 months, but that's a decision that you'll have to make in the future. But certainly during that special meeting, I think you have to begin with the assumption that nobody in this room has any understanding of what you do when you set a budget. And I think you need to make it very simple and go through so everybody here understands why you made the decision that you made. And then after that, you can have some real deep discussion in terms of what direction you wanna go. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it. Behind Allison, we have Charlotte Reese, please.
Hi, I'm Allison Newton, 4161 Dresser Road. This upcoming year, I'll be a junior at Sutter High School. I first started FRAC in second grade and at the early age of eight, I fell in love with swimming. The coaches were encouraging, inspiring and quickly became my role models. Being in FRAC taught me the importance of always doing your best, making me the person I am today. Not only had I found my sport, through the sport, I found myself. Being in FRAC brought me to the good and helped me through the bad. I realized how important school was and how highly I valued education. I set more challenges and goals for myself, knowing through determination I could achieve them. And it became my home and refuge when I felt alone. When I reached seventh and eighth grade, friends began to fall in the shadows, leaving you lost. But I never felt lost at gap. Everyone there became my family. Walking through the doors before practice during those winter months always brought a smile to my face as it does every person who's a part of FRAC, every person who will join FRAC in the future. But what'll those kids do if FRAC is gone? An article in USA Today stressed that just 36.6% of Yuba City, California residents have access to a place for physical exercise. Only one other metro area considered has a lower rate of access to exercise facilities. This article was titled, "The 25 Worst" This article was titled, "The Twenty-Five Worst Cities to Raise Your Children In." How can reducing that percent be beneficial to our city? Not only is exercise important for our physical health, but our mental health as well. Closing Gap is the opposite of advancement. It's a regression that'll echo throughout the years to come. When making this decision, don't just look at the immediate, the immediate. Open your eyes to the permanent outcomes that'll be etched in our city's history. Please reconsider your decision. Closing Gap isn't the answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And behind Ms. Reese, we have, um, last name of Sahota, please.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Reese. I live at sixteen twenty-three Dorothy Lane, and I have a daughter on the swim team. I was asked to read a letter from someone who can't be here tonight, Ryan Van Valkenburg. My name is Ryan Van Valkenburg. I'm fifteen years old. I've been part of FRAC since I was four years old and have been swimming with FRAC year-round for the past four years. I also swim for River Valley High School. Like most little kids, I'd tried T-ball, basketball, soccer, and other sports, but the one sport I could do really well and fell in love with was swimming. My family was so happy we had a stable, year-round team with great coaches in Yuba City. I found not just a team here, but a family. Sharon and Shelby Guillory have looked out for me since I first tried out eleven years ago. They helped me gain confidence, taught me to persevere, and they've been mentors and role models for most of my life. I'm very sad to hear your plan for closing Gauche Aquatic Park for five months out of the year, depriving all of us on FRAC of being together as a team and depriving us of a healthy, enjoyable outlet. Over the years, I have met some of my best friends on this team. It's given me the chance to meet people with similar mindsets, goals, and ambitions. To go without seeing my FRAC family for nearly a year and a half, for nearly half a year is heartbreaking. This is a unique sport, and there are no other options like it. Many of us have devoted years to it and have goals to continue swimming beyond high school. Your proposed shutdown puts our team in such financial jeopardy that we may lose FRAC forever. Your proposed solution for accommodating FRAC at the Racket Club will not work either. Two lanes for a sixty-person team is dangerous, plain and simple. The only other option is for us all to drive at least forty-five minutes to another swim team in another town. Many of us can't do that, but the bigger issue is we shouldn't have to travel to another town since we have working facilities right here in Yuba City. Even if we could spend four or more hours traveling, practicing, and traveling back and, traveling back, does the city council want all of us spending our time and money in other towns? The point of city planning and development is to make this town desirable enough that we don't need to spend our time and money in other towns, isn't it? The shutdown negatively affects my high school team as well. As you know, RV and YC high schools don't have pools on our campuses. Just as football players practice on real football fields with regulation equipment months before their season begins, we swimmers need regulation-sized, uh, regulation-sized pool to use before our season begins. We can't use some three-and-a-half-foot-deep pool at the Racket Club to practice. The people proposing such foolish ideas as viable options are just suggesting those things to trick the public into thinking they're trying to help us. That's not help, that's insulting. Would we tell football players to practice tackles without their helmets or pads? Would we tell them to practice their plays on a field smaller than regulation size? No. Why should we? So, why tell us we can practice at a facility that's unsafe and unusable for competitive swimming? If we cannot practice, we cannot win, and winning creates a sense of pride in our teams, our schools, and our town. Pride in Yuba City is desperately needed. If you're only doing this because of money and still don't care about us kids, then I ask you this question. Isn't it illogical to expect a facility not to have any problems sitting empty for months? History has proven that bringing a pool heater from freezing winter temperatures to safe temperature will break it again, costing more money than just running the heater at a reasonable temperature. It's still hot through September and October anyway. I get it, you want to save money, but this isn't the way to do it, and besides, aren't we worth the investment? Thank you.
Sharon, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. I failed to write down the name of the person.
Ryan Van Valkenburg.
Ryan Van Valkenburg. Van Valkenburg, ain't how old? Fifteen, thank you.
My name is Ajay Pausahoda. I'm fifteen years old. My address is thirty-three sixty-six San Brandon Way, Yuba City, California, nine five nine nine three. I wanted to say good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Ajay Pausahoda. I am a resident of Yuba City and soon to be a sophomore at River Valley High School. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you today. I want to speak about the potential closure of the city's Gauche Aquatic Park, or Gap, and its impact on my life as an athlete and various other swimmers that attend Gap five days a week throughout the year. I was introduced to Gap as a six-year-old during the summer months for attending swim lessons offered by the city. The first year was merely an introduction to the water, and I enjoyed the splash factor. After four weeks of lessons, I received a certificate of attendance and the lessons were over. The next year, I started over. My parents expected me to build upon last year's lessons. However, I've forgotten everything, and I had to start over. After another four-week session, as I was starting to feel a little bit more comfortable with the water, the lessons came to an end again. It was then that my parents found Feather River Aquatic Club's coach, or FRAC's friendly coach, that was willing to teach me swimming beyond the summer months. This coach taught me so well that I was proficient in all swimming strokes within a month of joining FRAC. The coach not only taught me swimming, but also ignited my love and passion for the sport of swimming to a competitive level. I started competing in local and regional swim meets and started getting really good at swimming. This past year, as a freshman for Yuba River Valley High School, I beat the record for the one-hundred-yard butterfly stroke and the two-hundred-yard freestyle in our conference. Swimming at a higher level involves dedication, hard work, and most importantly, access to a pool on a daily basis so that swimmers can perfect their stroke, timing, and build stamina. Being the only pool in Yuba City that offers competition-level infrastructure, Gap is vital for the success of any or current future swimmers of this town. Along with Gap, FRAC is also the only competitive swim club in Yuba City, and its existence depends upon the availability of Gap year-round for its swimmers. The coaches from FRAC are dedicated for their swimmer's success and are always on the pool deck, year-round, rain or shine. Along with my developing swimmer's success and are always present on the pool, or along with my developing swimming talents and my competitive spirit, FRAC has also helped me develop my self-esteem, my leadership skills, and has provided me with ways to manage my time and handle difficult situations with ease. FRAC has taught me teamwork, better organizational and problem-solving skills that have helped me excel not only in sports, but also academically. FRAC also provides a family-type atmosphere as all FRAC families help each other when needed. With the potential Gap closure, Yuba City youth will be without a fine aquatics facility for almost half the year. And most importantly, FRAC will have to close its doors for any current or prospective swimmers that may want to compete at a higher level. For me, it will be devastating, as I have high hopes and dreams for competing at a very high level, not only high school, but also compete for a higher education facility and represent the city of Yuba City. Please don't deprive me and my fellow swimmers of the only facility in this town where we can practice and own our swimming skills. I urge you to please keep this facility open year-round for the sake of this community, and most importantly, for the competitive swimmers of Yuba City. Please take any and all measures available to you to keep this facility open year-round and help sustain competitive swimming in Yuba City. Thank you again for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, sir. So, we have, next is Jennifer Sal, thank you, followed by Jessica Silveria.
My name is Jennifer Sal, nine five one Beamer Loop, Yuba City, California. Hello, Mayor, council members, and everyone here today. My family has lived in this community since it was founded. After growing up in this community, my husband and I knew that Yuba City is where we would call home. We have strong roots here and wanted to raise our two children here. In the years past, our son has played on the Yuba City Parks and Rec soccer teams, Little League, flag football, 4-H, only to have a constant feel of not fitting in. Feather River Aquatic Club provided something that no other sport or organization had been able to before: confidence. He found a love for the sport and a love for being a part of a team. After only one month of being on the team, he's won two ribbons and a medal. You should have seen the smile on his face and how proud he was, how proud we are. He is more confident than we have ever seen. Starting at fourteen, he is behind the athletic curve. He needs extra training to get to competition level. Using Gap is our family's only option to practice in the upcoming months. Shutting down the pool is basically sending him back to his room to play video games and watch YouTube, therefore also successfully ending his high school athletic career and any chance he could have had of getting an athletic scholarship. It is heartbreaking to see a child and all of these children who finally found a place where they belong, a goal to strive for, only to be told that it's over before it even began. We've seen too often programs taken away from our children. There's a constant outcry for more options in the community for kids to do, and now taking away another. Last year, the pool closed for one month. This year, you plan on closing for five months. What will happen next year or the year after that? Eventually, the cost to revive the pool will be too high to open, and it will just be another abandoned facility succumb to theft and vandalism. The community swimming pool is not a high-revenue maker, I understand that, but for some, it's an opportunity maker, an opportunity to swim in a safe location, an opportunity for kids to be part of a team other than football, baseball, or soccer, a place for them to belong and represent their community, a place for them to learn advanced skills, to gain an opportunity to compete at a high school level, which provides an opportunity to compete at a college level, sorry, and possibly a college education that might not have been obtainable without scholarships. When you close the pool, you close the door on the community, hope, and opportunity. As a lifetime and generational community member, I know we can do better for the kids and the families in this community. I ask that you please reconsider your decision, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jennifer, followed by Holly Stout, please.
Hi, my name is Jessica Silvera. My address is one three four Lonely Oak Street, Yuba City, California, nine five nine nine one. As I just said, my name is Jessica Silvera, and I have been a member of FRAC for seven years. Gauche Aquatic Park has housed FRAC, a place I have considered home for over a decade. FRAC has taught me and hundreds of other children very important skills, such as diligence and respect. When I started FRAC seven years ago, I never anticipated how important the FRAC family would become to me. Before joining swim, I had done several other sports and activities, but FRAC had something special that no other sport has. The caring, understanding coaches and lifeguards provided a safe place for me to make mistakes and grow from them. Shelby and Sharon Guillory inspired me to treat others with kindness and respect, regardless of their swim level. The amazing lifeguards have always helped me with a small scrape or an upset stomach. It is completely shocking that this family that I have grown up with may not be around my senior year. There is no other local facility large enough for sixty swimmers to have practice. Being a part of this aquatic club allowed me to join high school swim as a freshman and be a leader and serve as an example for all swimmers, showing each swimmer respect. FRAC completely changed my life, giving me coaches I can always turn to, who know nearly everything about me from our daily interactions over the past seven years. It has also allowed me to meet some of my best friends, who always cheer me up after a bad day. I cannot imagine this experience, I have been lucky enough to grow up with, not being given to others due to the closing of this facility. In addition to being a member of FRAC, I was employed at Gap this year as a lifeguard and swim instructor. This summer, I personally have had six rescues, and there have been many more from other lifeguards. We treat scraped knees, bee stings, and bloody noses. We clean up puke and poop almost weekly. Today, I had the pleasure of cleaning blood up off the deck. We help keep this community safe. Yet, this decision to close Gap, where many of us lifeguards plan to work during the offseason, was never discussed with any of the people that work to keep this facility a clean, safe place. Today is the first time that I have heard, in four minutes before the opening session, that there will not be an offseason. There are many other activities Gap can host to bring in revenue. We could ask service organizations and health-based nonprofits for grants, as keeping the pool open promotes health for senior citizens in the water aerobics class, our master-lap swimmers, and many children participating in FRAC. The decision to close Gap for the, for five of the twelve months seems hasty and unfair, considering there was never anyone representing the portion of the public that benefit from the pool. I can only hope this decision is not set in stone, and the representatives of Yuba City can work with us to reach a compromise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And then following Ms. Stout, we have Abigail Zunino. And then Chris Zunino.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Holly Stout. I live at one six four eight Chelsea Place in Yuba City. I've been a FRAC parent for five years, and I have three kids who are on FRAC, and I am truly saddened by this most recent turn of events. I do understand that the council has scheduled a special meeting for July twenty-ninth. Nevertheless, I wanted to come here tonight and ask this council to specifically agendize consideration of a budget adjustment or amendment or supplemental appropriation for July twenty-ninth, that very same special meeting, similar to the resolution adopted at the April second meeting, allowing an amended salary schedule and other budget adjustments that this council has undertaken at other times. That way, because we are under six weeks from the time that you have scheduled to close this facility, there's potentially time to actually get a budget amendment done. The special meeting's a great start, and I appreciate the city's recognition that patrons of Gap have been completely left out of the decision-making process. But because of the short timeline, there may not be time to both have the discussion and also agendize the solution for a subsequent meeting, in time to provide the certainty that residents and this team deserve regarding the facility's future. The city does have the ability to change its budget at any time during the year, as you have done before. I simply request that you make sure that that is part of the agenda for July twenty-ninth. Thank you.
I'm Abigail Zunino, three eighty-one North Township Road, nine five nine nine three. My name is Abigail Zunino, and I've been swimming with FRAC for four years. Prior to swimming, I'd tried numerous sports, but they did not stick like swimming has. Swimming with FRAC has taught me many valuable lessons and life skills. The loss of FRAC will affect my ability to receive the necessary training I need to continue my swimming passion. I have found a sport I truly love. One thing FRAC has taught me is to never limit your challenges, challenge your limits. This led me to competing in my first open-water swim at Donner Lake last year. I was very scared, but I remembered Coach Sharon and Coach Shelby always saying, "Don't limit your challenges, challenge your limits." So, I went out there and tried my best. I received first place in all age groups in that event, and I was stoked. Without FRAC, I would have never had the confidence to do that. FRAC has pushed me to get out of my comfort zone and exceed my expectations. FRAC has also taught me more than just the sport itself. They have taught our team to always treat others with respect, have good sportsmanship, respect our, or represent our team with pride, and never be anybody except yourself. FRAC has not only made me a better swimmer, but a better person, and I hope other kids in the near future have the same opportunity I had to be part of this life-changing club. I would like to ask the council to reconsider their decision to close the pool for five months and let FRAC remain in its home at Gauche Aquatic Park. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The last speaker card I have is from Chris Zunino.
That's my daughter. Hopefully, I can speak as well as she did. I'm Chris from three eight one North, uh, three eighty-one North Township Road, Yuba City, nine five nine nine three. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to address the concerns over the council's decision to close the aquatic, Gauche Aquatic Club for five months a year. As a parent of a FRAC swimmer, I enjoy watching my daughter grow and mature as a swimmer under the guidance of Coach Sharon and Shelby. The FRAC program has provided my daughter with an opportunity to be a part of a team and fuel her aspirations to continue her swimming career through college. The loss of a local pool would adversely affect her ability to train and compete at the collegiate level. For her and her teammates to effectively train, they must swim at least three to five days a week, an arrangement that is currently attainable with a local pool. If FRAC were to shut down five months a year, it essentially closed down the program. While there are other teams she could join, my wife and I would only be able to transfer, transport her to Roseville, Sacramento, or Woodland only two days a week, at a substantially higher cost of time and funds, not to mention the loss of her training time. Watching my daughter compete and grow has provided the additional benefit of aspiring my own fitness journey. As an aging man with an office job, I found myself increasingly sedentary and gaining weight. A year and a half ago, I made a commitment to myself and my family to change my ways and work towards my own physical fitness. This included swimming at Gap while my daughter was practicing with FRAC. Last summer, I competed in two triathlons and have lost over thirty pounds. Gap is more than just a pool. I've made friends with the master swimmers, some of them are here tonight, and recently joined the Yuba Sutter Tri Club. I believe some of those members are here as well. This was all possible because the city made a commitment to its citizens to build this remarkable facility. I feel the city has done a poor job with its outreach to the community in engaging the year-round use of Gap. Equally disturbing is the lack of communication with FRAC and the community members that use the site. I believe a more open approach should have been used. The budgetary issues facing the operation of this pool are not new. With an open approach, there could have been opportunities for everyone to help resolve these issues. While I understand the council has difficult decisions to make, these decisions have consequences. Standing before you today are the children and adults in which these decisions have affected. I sincerely hope the council will reconsider these decisions, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that is the last speaker card I have. Is anybody would like to say anything? Does anybody would like to say anything that has not turned in a card? Nope? All right. Moving on to consent calendar, and we're polling, which one? That's a good point. A lot of times, people after the public comment period, they don't really need, need or want to stay for the entire meeting. If any folks would like to leave now, we can go ahead and do a sixty-second pause to allow that to happen.
Now there'll be two people left.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jan. Shannon, which one are we polling? All right, door's closed again.